So the public and also call in numbers. So we normally, I love seeing this many people attending one of our council meetings, but this isn't the norm, a little new for us to have this many folks. I'm going to ask everybody to keep their microphones muted until you're called on and so that we can keep the background noise to a minimum. And I'll do my best. And if Clerk Reinsen can help me and Deputy Clerk Janine, just help me catch people if I'm missing somebody. We got two pages of guests here. So I'll try to pop back and forth in the citizen comment periods to make sure I don't miss on anybody that wants to to comment this evening. So with that, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So with that, we have a published agenda. Are there any proposed amendments to this evening's agenda? And I'm not-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, I would move that we approve the agenda as published.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Clausen and a second by Councilmember Lucarelli to approve the agenda as published. And is there any further discussion of the agenda? Most agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda as published? Please say aye.
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 Any council members opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set for this evening. So we are to our first citizen comment period. The first citizen comment period is for items that are on this evening's agenda. And members of the public have up to three minutes to speak on any item on the agenda. Later in the meeting, we have a second citizen comment period that is for anything on your mind. So it doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda. So is there anyone wishing to address the city council this evening on an item on this evening's agenda? Please raise your hand and I'll call on you and then you can unmute. And I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. Another moment. And so that's- Ms. Rogers, I think that's a still framed of you raising your hand. So I'm not, I'm going to assume you're not wanting to- council, but that's all right. So I'm going to close the citizen comment period. We have a consent agenda that was published. And before we take a motion on that, if you looked at the payment vouchers, there was a significant voucher for $1.4 million to Kitsap County, and then it was reversed back out. And I know, and I talked about that today. And I just, if he could give a more detailed explanation of that, what that transaction represents.
Yeah, that transaction is actually the purchase of our Bethel Right of Way property as we are preparing to close on the property next week. We received our wire instructions. Unfortunately, we received our wire instructions after we started the AP process. And so I noticed that we were going to write a check rather than create the wire that is typical in these type of transactions. So I contacted our software provider and asked them if we could reverse the packet. They said the the cleanest way to capture what happened and maintain the integrity of your internal controls is to go forward with the packet, produce the check and then void out the check and then create a new accounts payable packet with the draft. So it's very clear and transparent about what occurred. And so that's what we did. So you'll see the the posting, then the reversal under the check framework, and then you'll see the reposting under the draft. So I thought it was a good process overall that maintained the integrity of our internal controls. And ultimately, we got to the end result, which we wanted is to be able to have the wire for closing next week.
So thank you for that explanation, Noah. It was just a large enough transaction that probably should caught, should have caught everybody's eye. So with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go ahead.
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Okay. And so I had a motion by Councilmember Kuchardi and a second by Councilmember Deener, I believe. And I'm having difficulty seeing all you guys. So council members, go ahead and feel free to unmute yourself and speak freely as members of the public where I was trying to keep from the background noise. So so we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is any discussion of those consent items? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent items as presented? Please state aye.
Aye.
Or is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent packet has been approved. We have two presentations tonight, and I think many of our guests here tonight are here to see the update from Rice, Fergus, Miller on the South Kitsap Community Center. So I think Steve Rice is here. And Brandy, are you prepared to let Steve share your, share his screen?
Absolutely. So I think, sorry. So I think I would make him co-host. And then Steve, you should be able to share your screen from there.
Um, Brandy, if you would do that for me, I'll be the one that share the screen and-
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
There we go.
Welcome, Steve and Lori.
Thank you, Mayor Rob.
So take it away.
All right. Thank you very much. It's nice to be here again. It's update time. It's been one month since we visited you before. And the last time we had really a full check-in with you was on October 20th. So it's good to be back. And Lori has been steering the ship navigating really, really well. And we've made a lot of progress since we were last with you. I'm going to ask Lori to kind of explain the agenda for tonight, and then she and I'll kind of take turns.
Okay, I'll share my screen now. We all see it. Okay. All right. So what we're going to do tonight is first, we'll just do a brief recap of our schedule, what we've been up to and where we are today. And then the meat of our presentation is really to share with you a few things. One, share with you the results from the last public outreach on the South Kitsap Community Event Center. Then we will talk about the final three site options that have been chosen by the steering committee. And she'll also share with you the three site and building concepts for each of those sites. And then after that, we'll talk about the next steps coming up here in the next year. So with that, Steve, do you want me to go through the schedule?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. So this is a condensed version of our schedule. It just kind of shows you what we've been up to since the last time we were in front of city council. Like I mentioned, we had the public outreach. And so we're going to share that result with you. And here we are today on this red dash line at the second public outreach that we're doing here at the city council meeting. As far as the site assessment and concept planning has gone, from the public outreach, we've finalized the building program that we are proposing for this community event center. And then we took that building program and came up with the three different layouts and three different sites as a point of discussion, which will be the basis of a final site selection moving forward. And it's over to Steve to talk about the results of the public outreach.
Yeah. So public outreach is kind of the first thing on our agenda today. And I want to recognize Josh and Sarah Johnson. I know they're here on the call. They're a subconsultant to RFM. They're locals in your area. They've been involved with the Imagine Port Orchard work now for almost three years. And I really have to congratulate them on the level of work that they've done and how they put this result report together for us. I want to thank Josh and Sarah. And I may, I may ask them to help me explain something here as we go along. So, you know, there was a large survey done, and we want to go through a few pieces of that with you. So Josh and Sarah put together some, some statistics. I know these kinds of things are interested or are interesting to city council folks. Things like open rate, number of emails on the IPO email list, the number of persons who reached the site on Facebook. And I think the next slide is even more interesting. So why don't we hop to that one? Statistics about participants. Almost 2,000 people clicked the survey that was launched. Over half of them started the survey and 613 completed them. But when you look at that and you think, well, gee, only a third of them completed, you don't know why exactly. How many completed and who didn't. But when we think about the very robust numbers here, getting 613 different respondents to weigh in and give input on the survey for our area, I think is pretty amazing. And another reason why I think we are, we ought to really, you know, thank them and the city for getting this out there and making it prevalent. Clearly, a lot of people were interested in this. So let's go to the next one. So kind of the first thing that was asked is, can you share some words with us that describe kind of how you see Port Orchard and South Kitsap as a place to live and sort of moving forward if we think about forward progress? And, you know, all of these words showed up and the larger texts are the things that were mentioned most often. No surprise that community is the biggest one. And I think speaks to kind of the vibe in Port Orchard that it's always been a very welcoming kind of place. And so what can we do to enhance these things? Safety is a very dominant word here. These are things for the design team to keep in mind. So now that some meat, kind of part two to this had a series of 14 or 15 or 16 questions. And you can see them all kind of listed here. Kind of the question is, you know, which of these things do you think is is most important? Which ones would you rank as very important? And and they have a choice to rank, you know, very important, maybe somewhat important, not so important, not important at all. And it's interesting that you look at the kinds of things that attract the most attention. Space for community festivals down near the bottom, covered outdoor areas for all season use. And by the same token, see some things that are named less often. But these are all part of the very important category. So it's interesting for us to see these and keep them in mind as we began planning a building. Let's go to the next slide, Lori. Space for community festivals. And this was the number one, you know, highest response for very important. And when I think about community festivals and the fact that we're designing an event center, I think there's a lot of alignment here. And by the word festivals, it's kind of interesting how that question was asked. Festivals, you could think of as rather small scale, or you could think of as rather large scale. And when we think about this building and its potential placement, we're going to talk about that in a minute, the ability to host festivals or be a centerpiece for a festival or where the touch point for events is whether those events are in the building, outside the building, in the town, or some combination of all of those. We want to make sure that the building we designed can do those things, can do all of those things. Because clearly, the community has said, you know, this is how we see the true value of this building. Next. Covered areas for outdoor use. It sounds like a lot of people have lived in the Northwest a while. And I see some of you smiling. And and if you, if that made you smile, you probably have lived in the Northwest for a while. And you know that it's, it's difficult to kind of get your money's worth out of even the place where you live unless you can also sort of somehow enjoy the outside as well as the inside. And by extending indoor space with covered areas, it increases our ability to enjoy our place, our home, our event center, our community center, our school, our library, whatever it is. And interesting to us how this ranked so highly. And again, something that we will be very cognizant of when we start to shape this building. The city should be the catalyst for downtown redevelopment, the foundation for what downtown can become over the next 15 to 20 years. And this isn't something that Rice, Fergus, Miller dreamt up. This was a quotation. We were the survey that Josh and Sarah put together, gave people an opportunity to just talk a little bit. And Josh and Sarah, are you able to share a voice here for a minute? If you are, I'd love to invite you to say something about this and maybe the quality of the things that people said and and why you chose this one.
Yeah. Hi, this was one of my favorite quotes of the whole, all 613 feedbacks, just because I felt it really captured what we're trying to do downtown. There was a lot of positive feedback for the survey, maybe just a handful of people on the opposite end. And so I felt like this really captured in one sentence what everyone was accumulatively saying together.
Yeah, a lot of optimism was expressed, just a lot of, a lot of pride, a lot of community optimism and a lot of forward thinking, you know, looking to the future.
Thank you. And, you know, this is really great because I think moving forward and, you know, making presentations to the community and to the Kitsap Public Facilities District, the fact that we've gotten such robust response and we see things like this, they're just a validation that the community is really ready to use something like this. And we know that it can be something for everyone as well as host these events that we would not otherwise be able to see in Port Orchard and attract revenue. So these are, I think, really, they are foundational statements and should be a foundational building. What's next on this section, Lori? So some pointed questions were also asked. If you can imagine something new for Port Orchard's downtown experience, what would it look like? And it's interesting, you know, what respondents have to say. And, you know, these were sort of handpicked. I don't see the word marquee here used in the way that it's currently used in in Port Orchard, but a marquee building, meaning one that's a centerpiece would maybe be another word where where everything is really done nicely and is is high quality. The idea of the building being experiential, I love this because we also have some ideas for how the public can enjoy the building if they are not going to a specific event there, or or maybe not even visiting the library on that particular day, but they just happen to be going by. Ways to interact with the building is super important. And so it can be part of the waterfront experience and tied to the trail. That's exactly what we're after. And then parking, parking, parking. And, you know, I will just say that when we get past the break at year end, and we move forward into phase one B, we have already been compiling parking data with the city's help. And I want to thank Nick Bond for his help in doing that. We have a lot of information about parking. We have spoken to other stakeholders about parking, the development partner about parking and how parking will work. And I want to tell you that the goal here will be to show how new parking that's created as a part of this master plan work, together with existing parking, can really support some amazing events here. And then if we're careful about how we think about the timing of those events, that things should work together very well. But we know, you know, parking is a really sensitive topic. Excuse me. And the CEC building by itself is not providing a large complement of parking around it. And so it needs these other sources to work. And it will bring new parking as a result of the master plan. So I want you to know, city council members, that we are thinking hard about parking and parking will be an important part of any presentation. How important is green building? Everybody has a lot of different ideas, maybe about what green building is and its value. It's interesting that in a community that that I don't think is probably constructed, new public buildings that are rated as maybe passive house buildings or green gold buildings or lead buildings, that half of the respondents say it's very important. And a good member or a good percentage of the rest attach some level of importance to this. It's great to see. And I think we're almost done with this portion. Do you live in the city limits? 41, yes. 59, no. But we're betting that many of the rest of them live in South Kitsap. And then how many actually work within the city limits? And almost 30%. So some demographic information for you. And I believe, is it true, Lori, that that's our last slide in this section?
Yes, for the public outreach, yes.
So before we move on, Josh or Sarah, would you like to add anything? And then this might be a good time. If council has any questions about public outreach, now might be a really great time to attempt to answer them.
Josh and Sarah, go ahead. Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to just to kind of add that we were also really pleasantly surprised with the level of engagement and outreach and the support of the city and the Kitsap Regional Library with the messaging outreach was was incremental. But it was so encouraging to see how many people came out of the woodwork with ideas, with passions, with really with a lot of pride, like I said, optimism and forward thinking. And I just want to, I don't know, just pay, pay, pay homage to everybody that filled out the survey, that took time and really expressed their vision for what our community should be for ourselves and for our children, for generations to come. So it was just a really great experience. And so I thank everybody that took a second to do that.
Thank you for sharing.
Any questions from the council before we move on?
Council members, do you have any questions about the outreach?
All right. I will say thank you to the library, too. You know, they have quite a database. They have quite a way to reach their community already. And they were very helpful in pushing this around. Okay, let's move on, Lori. Lori, you want to do this one?
So I mentioned earlier that we have been reviewing several sites. And now we are down to the top three sites that we are going to present conceptual plans for. So the first one here, site option A, is where the existing Kitsap Bank currently sits, right at the bend of Bay Street, right by the water. And here's the marina. Our site option B is over here by where the library currently sits, right by the ferry on Sydney. And then the third site option is on the other side of Bay Street, right here, where we have an ongoing, I believe it's a retail building with business and a large parking area, also owned by Kitsap Bank. We started out with six sites, as you see here, there was a number one site, if any of you are familiar with the master plan that was presented to the city originally. This site here, where the current 7-Eleven sits, was where the community event center was proposed. But as we evaluated all the sites, it thought we discovered that we realized that that site is not available. Site number three over here was a discussion earlier on because Bay Street and Sydney being sort of the heart of downtown of Port Orchard, you thought that maybe this would be a good thing to look at. But as we evaluated the shape of the the site and how that lays out, also didn't work out very well. And then we also considered this site six here, which is also another property owned by Kitsap Bank. They currently have their drive-through banking right here, and you've got some marina parking. So you'll see later on, as we show you the master plan and how our CEC relates to that master plan, what this site is leaning towards becoming.
Thanks, Lori. So the last time we met with our steering committee, which does include some folks from library and and now the school district and members of, one member from KPFD, and of course, your own staff, we walked through the building program, you know, which we won't do tonight because we've already done that with you guys. It hasn't changed very much. But the point here is that we want to show, show them kind of what design work looks like when you're, when you're actually trying to give graphic form to the program and test it against the attributes of these three sites. And so we're going to walk you through kind of what the end result of that was. Lori, why don't we go to the next slide? We kind of get in love with the messiness of design. So site option A, you know where that is. And you see the rest of the master plan sort of embracing it. You can read those words and kind of know what they mean. And let's go to, we're going to zero in on site A now, on option A. So our site, our site concept and our site test diagrams that will be used by the selection team to rank each of the outcomes on site option A, site option B, and site option C, this being A, they look like this, and they contain this level of information. So I wanted to explain sort of what we're aiming for here. So between the public outreach and the program, we know there are some key things that need to be accomplished. And so you're familiar already with the site criteria that the team will use when they rank the sites. We needed to take the work to a level where the selection team could make sense of how well any of these three schemes performed against any of these criteria. And of course, we'll be there to help explain. So they have some tangible ways to think about these and judge them accordingly. So we are not designing a building in three dimensions. We do that when we get to phase one B, which is after the turn of the year. But we use these, call them user diagrams, or the building's program put into two dimensions at scale on the property so that we can see how it fits, what pieces relate to other pieces, how they relate to the outdoors, what are the attributes around the building that can be used to, let's say, extend the life of the building into three seasons or four seasons. All of these things, we needed to somehow illustrate. So we developed a way, a graphic way of explaining how this community event center begins to take its shape on the site at scale. And you can see, I'll walk you around this one a little bit. The Bay Street, of course, and over on the right of the building, you have Orchard Avenue, which goes up to where your new sewer lift station will be. And the generator, you're familiar with that. We laid in the shoreline master plan that's been adopted along the water. We combined a lot of different files for this, survey files, street files, to make a composite that we worked on top of. The colored areas represent potential arrangements for things, but we didn't get too heavy into this. It's mostly a scale exercise at this point. I would expect all of those things, those colors to change and move around as the time comes for that in schematics. But it gives a really nice idea. Oh, man, we practically double the usable space by locating on this site because we have a waterfront porch that is kind of colored green or gray. We call that usable hardscape or landscape. So you can imagine moving in and out of the building and using this together for festivals or events, really a pretty wonderful solution. An obvious entry. We do take care of close at hand loading- We do take care of close-at-hand loading and unloading for the library and event space. Want to make sure we have really good pickup and drop off. So we highlight those things so that it's easy for the selection team to make sense of what they're looking at. And then we also did upper floor space, just so the selection team could see that. So Lori, we could maybe go to that. And obviously, we leave the ground plane behind. But the idea of purple being library space, or blue being event space, and orange being common space, are open to below, being able to get outside on a deck, a covered deck, that sort of thing shown here. And, you know, Site Two, I won't presuppose anything, of course, but this original Site Two, what we call Option A, is a very tasty site from a planning standpoint. So Lori, let's hop maybe more quickly onto the next two. We'll move over to Site B, which is where the current library sits. And if you remember from the criteria, you know, this site, while it's amazing in some ways, isn't able to fulfill some of what Site Two does, but still it's worth testing. And we wanted to make sure we had one that was outside of the master plan that was proposed as a what-if, and an in case. We wanted to be able to have an option. And we knew this site, you know, presents a lot of complications with transportation. There's a lot of things coming together right now. It's a very involved site. Obviously, the library already lives there, so it creates problems for them if we were to, you know, ask them to move. But nonetheless, let's hop into the site plan. This is a smaller footprint, and it realizes a three-story building, not a two-story building. A long, skinny building with some open area in the middle, or lobby area in the middle, lots of opportunity for view and outdoor space, and really kind of right on top of the water. Nick's great work in adding, in 2021, the water enjoyment use into your shoreline master program code, I think gives us a great deal of confidence that we could do this if we wanted to. But it's a more constricted site. But it fits, it works. Why don't we go upstairs, Lori? We're proposing, you know, that transit sort of move back behind. And, you know, we haven't talked to transit about that, and we probably won't need to. But I think to make this project really work, we would want to get traffic off of what little area there is between the building footprint and the water, and use that for event space and enjoying the outdoors, and creating a new access for transit on the backside. And that would be where the access for the public would be as well. So it could work out very, very nicely. Obviously, complicated, lots of other things have to happen, lots more money involved, et cetera. But I think a really exciting solution in some ways. And then Site Option C, which the selection team will look at, is really a piece of, a larger piece of property that you all know, includes 640 Bay. If we were to zoom in on that, there's a pretty nicely set way to handle this site with layers of parking underneath, with a large stairway that goes from Bay Street up to Prospect, adjoins Port Street, where we expect there to be public access to the water. A really great solution. It's a matter of, well, we don't need the whole site for the event center. It's way too big a footprint for even if we were all on one story. And this site has value for other uses. And it so happens that this southern half, where the car is, works a little bit better for the event center to sit on top of this platform. So it would be at grade with Prospect Street and higher than that. So two stories starting at Prospect. And then the developer would most likely use the northern block for residential, which is a really nice, you know, bigger, longer size, which works great for multifamily housing, as you can imagine. Double-loaded corridors, that sort of thing. So that's sort of a quick overview of sort of how those plans came together and what the team, the selection team, will use when they're looking at criteria and doing their scoring. And it's just been great to work with Columbia Hospitality, been great to work with Kitsap Regional Library, and of course, your own staff on helping to imagine how all of this could go together. It's been, I think, a really successful exercise. I think we're at a good place with the right level of definition, not too far, but enough that is understandable, that they can make sense, and they can make good judgments. Lori, am I forgetting, was there more to look at? So again, I guess I would open it up to you, Mayor, and the council, if there are any questions for me on what I just shared.
There is one more slide, Steve, and that's the next steps. And if you want to go into that, and then we'll talk about, ask, take questions.
Lori?
Or Steve, which one he wants to draw?
Yeah, so like Steve explained, so we've got those three options. We have scheduled right now in December to get together with the Site Selection Committee. And that committee is made up of some of you here at City Council, folks from the library, from KRL, Kitsap Regional Library. Of course, the mayor is part of that. And I believe there's a couple other people, like the Kitsap Transit and KPFD as well. So it's a representation of a group of people that will be sitting down with the site selection criteria that we presented to the council before to review those. And the intent is that by December eighth, we make a recommendation out of those three options, which one is preferred. And hopefully, by January, when we present to KPFD, a final decision is made. And that is when, in February, our team starts the next phase of our design, which is the schematic design.
Thank you, Lori. So Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and the council.
Council members, do you have any questions about our process and where we're at today? I think it's been great work, great working with Rice, Fergus, Miller on this project. And I think the process we've been going through has been very, very thorough. Questions or comments? Councilmember Clausen?
More comment than a question. It's just, it's very impressive to see. You can clearly see there's been an awful lot of thought and discussion that's gone into the selection of those three sites and trying to determine which is the best. So to me, it looks like the process has been thorough and great. And I look forward to the next phase.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor, thank you, Counselor John. I was at a board meeting yesterday, and they were commissioners. Today, they're council people.
I understand.
Councilmember Deener, do you have a question or a comment?
No, I just wanted to follow up with John. I also appreciate how rapidly this has been moving. I know that it's very important, and we don't want to overrun the public process, but it's also important to keep it moving along and to meet deadlines and fiduciary obligations. And so I appreciate the good work.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Councilmember Rose Pepe, go ahead.
I'll follow up with a question. So what additional community outreach is going on? Or will, you know, when does it stop?
I'll let Lori take that one.
Yeah, so between now and January, this is the last one. However, as we move forward to the next design phase, there will be, I believe, one or two more similar platforms where we show progress of that design. So over the next several months, you're going to have another one of these public outreach. Originally, of course, when this was thought of, we would all be in one room, looking at actual drawings and presenting to each other. But obviously, for as long as we have COVID, we're going to do it this way through these city council meetings. But yes, there are more intended along the way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Councilmember Kachari?
Mayor, I was just going to say, I really appreciate from, you know, the statistics on the demographics of where people are responding from, right? I know we're in Port Orchard, but in all reality, for a community center standpoint, you know, this has the potential to draw from a much larger geographic region like the district of our library, like our school districts. And so it's great to see the additional feedback from the larger community. So great job of getting that reach beyond just the Port Orchard city limits, because I think it will be a magnet that draws from a larger area.
Yes, and a recent addition to our steering committee and our site, and who also will participate in our site selection committee is Superintendent Winters. And he's been a great addition to our group. With that, well, thank you, Steve and Lori. I appreciate you coming tonight, and I look forward to seeing you back at our next council meeting, sharing the results of the Site Selection Committee.
Thank you very much.
It's great every time. Thanks. We really love coming and sharing, so you'll see us many more times. And thanks again for the good feedback and always the nice hospitality.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Goodbye.
Okay. Let's see here, we've got two presentation tonight. The second one is our lobbyist, Josh Reese, is here this evening. And Annika Von is also with him tonight. So Josh and Annika, you're, I think you've got a presentation for us. Janine, would you mind letting, allowing, I think, Josh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let Josh share his screen. Josh got his pilot's license since I last saw him last.
Annika, too. You can make the determination about who's co-pilot for who here. It's nice to see everyone. I have to say that next time I do this, I'm going to have to remember not to follow the architect with the cool presentation, because our presentation is not going to be nearly as exciting or interesting, I have to tell you. I will say, as I'm going through this, so I can't see everyone when I share my screen like this. So if you have questions, please do go ahead and just let me know. I'm happy to answer questions at the end also. We are really excited to be here. Nice to see everyone. We're in kind of, as with COVID, it makes everything weird. We're in kind of a strange place, too, with government relations preparing for the next session. But the purpose of tonight is to run through what we are thinking about for our 21 legislative agenda. Mayor Paton Su and we have been talking about this for actually several months now, really sort of monitoring, monitoring how things develop at the state level, just a lot of change, obviously, and a lot of just needing to react essentially to how the government is dealing with the COVID situation. You know, just today, actually, we heard another rumor. Back in July, we were thinking there was going to be a special session, and it seemed like every month, there was a new rumor that there was going to be one. And we just heard another one rumor today that the governors, I guess, said that maybe there would be one before January. But at this point, we're just planning on getting ready for January and what we'll be advocating for for a session. So looking forward, the legislature is going to be meeting in a virtual format. The Senate has put out written guidelines. They clearly articulate that the campus will be closed to the public. Legislative leaders will be in town. But for the most part, ranking file members will not be. We will not be allowed to go meet legislators there. The House is still working on how exactly they're going to work. If you think about it, the House has twice as many members to accommodate. And just a lot more dynamics there in terms of how to prepare. The other thing that's going on is they will for sure have to get together at the beginning of January in order to adopt rules for them, allowing them to meet in a virtual format. So there will be at least some initial in-person meeting, but it will be very quick and very limited interaction. So as you're thinking about, you know, testifying those types of things, all of the hearings are going to be on Zoom. They have an electronic sign-in process now. Committee chairs are going to have to filter through potentially hundreds of people that are signing in virtually to testify on bills. And we'll be alerting you to opportunities to testify on issues that you care about as well. But it's just going to be a very different situation. We just finished our election at the state level, probably one of the most expensive state elections we've ever had in our history. And the end result was absolutely no change in majorities. The numbers are exactly the same in the House and the Senate. The Democrats control by exactly the same margins. We did have some individual legislator legislative seats that flipped. Notably, we're seeing red districts get more red. We saw southwest Washington, where we had some rural Democrats, really traditionally strong Democratic districts, now flip completely red. That was in the 19th district. We also saw up in Watkins County, we saw some traditionally red districts start to flip blue. And we also see essentially, you know, a lot of the races have really been about whether more conservative candidates are going to beat out less conservative candidates and in blue districts, whether more progressive candidates are going to beat out less progressive candidates. So but at the end of the day, the legislature is exactly the same. We do know that in the virtual format, they are going to have to be very selective about the issues that they choose. It's going to be much more similar to a special session type of agenda than your typical session. We just heard yesterday that they're in the House, they're saying each member can have seven bills for the entire session introduced. They won't have nearly as many hearing slots, and so not nearly as many bills are going to move forward even from those introduced. And so we're hearing, just over summer, it's been very clear what the top priorities are going to be for legislative leaders. And that's, those are the issues that they're really going to get the attention and going to work on. Law enforcement, public safety reform will absolutely be top of the list. The additional money, business assistance from the COVID pandemic, public health funding, providing additional resources for your public health at the local level for contract tracing, all of those types of activities. We also are hearing a lot of interest in dealing with the fact that we've had this eviction moratorium for such a long time and the stress that that's providing, both on landlords and foreclosures that we're worried about, but also the need for rental assistance for tenants. Everybody is talking about broadband, probably second only to the law enforcement issue. The need for broadband right now has just been put in such great focus that there will be a variety of different proposals on how to expand broadband in the state. Social justice and equity, not just from the perspective of police reform, but really almost every, you hear the caucus is talking about almost every policy question being put through an equity lens. And what they really mean is whether the individual policies have a benefit or a detriment to persons of color, Native Americans, and really just everything that they're thinking about is going to have some sort of filter about what is the equity impact of this. Probably less so now that the budget is looking like it's in less dire shape. We'll talk about that in a minute. But there is a Department of Revenue Tax Structure Work Group that has been meeting through the summer. They are actually, will be meeting through next year as well and are bringing recommendations back to the legislature in 2022. But, or at the end of 2021, I apologize. But their work has been, become much more relevant and potentially some of their discussions expedited because of the state budget problems and the fact that they have a deficit and are going to be looking at different options for balancing their budget. So we'll see whether they get, how creative they get this legislative session. Even though we are saying that they've been told that key priority bills aren't going to move, there's still lots of conversations going on out there about developing proposals on carbon tax, how to fund infrastructure, cap and trade proposals, low-carbon fuel standards, reforming the Growth Management Act. Just lots and lots of work going on out there. Really remains to be seen how effective they will be able to negotiate difficult proposals like those in a virtual environment, and whether they'll be able to move them in the timeframe that they have. There are budget challenges. There are also some opportunities. Just this last Wednesday, the State Economic Revenue Forecast Council just came out with their last, or latest budget forecast. The bottom line is that the state budget is looking, operating budget is looking much better than back in June, which was the first forecast that we received after the pandemic. But it is still not as good as they thought it was going to be in February. But it is still not as good as they thought it was going to be in February. So they're predicting at this point that the budget will grow about 10% in this current biennium, the 19 to 21 biennium. That's where we're at right now. They predict a 7.2% overall increase in the next biennium. They do their revenue forecasts in in four-year terms. But remember that the February forecast from earlier this year was the foundation for the current budget that they passed. And so everything they're talking about in terms of whether there's a budget shortfall is in relation to the money that they thought they were going to be getting in February, which obviously everything is down significantly since then. So the November forecast that we just had last week shows that there's actually $2 billion less for the current biennium and each of the next two biennia as well. So there, even though it's growing, this is not growing as fast as they expected it would be. So in their terms, they are going to have to be doing some reductions, either reductions in order to come down to the revenue that they're seeing or some additional revenue opportunities or taxes. Their overall budget's about about $53 billion. Keep in mind, I always try and remember people that just like your budget, a lot of their budget is dedicated either through federal obligations like Medicaid matching requirements or the Supreme Court's McCleary obligation for higher education. They can't move around all of those $53 billion or cut all those $53 billion like maybe they would like to. They have some restrictions. We do believe that this puts state shared revenues at risk, those dollars that the state shares with cities and counties and other local governments for things like the Criminal Justice Assistance Account or the Public Works Trust Fund. It was in the 2008 Great Recession that the legislature started moving money out of the Public Works Trust Fund. And so we're very concerned, will be watching very closely whether or not they try to solve their budget problem with those local government revenues. And we are hearing with the strong Democratic majorities now, you definitely hear a lot of the new particularly new progressive Democrats talking about how they don't think that they can cut their way out of this problem, that they do still need to be looking at new revenue sources. I think the biggest the one of the most interesting things to watch this session is that dialogue within the Democratic Caucus about whether to get out of this without new revenue or whether to impose some sort of new tax structure. So that's the operating budget side. On the capital budget, because the capital budget is is largely funded by bonds, which are paid for out of the operating budget, there is still significant capacity for capital infrastructure projects. In fact, the governor this year is talking about in his budget proposal, which will come out in mid-December, that he usually does not do a particularly large capital budget or doesn't usually fund local projects. This year, he is talking about funding some local projects for the economic stimulus for the job creation that those would have. And we actually have been, we typically don't do this, but we already have been talking to the governor's office about your community center project. Letting him know that there's a good, you know, a good project here that would create some jobs if we could get some capital budget funding for it. The capital budget will be about the same size that it was in 2019. They fund just about $5 billion worth of projects in the capital budget. The transportation budget is not good news, despite the fact that the court did reverse an issue of 976 and and makes that deficit not as bad. They are still down almost half a billion dollars in the current biennium because of COVID impacts, because of people not spending as much money on gas, not traveling as much and not using tolls as much. Obviously, big impact on the ferry system as well from that. So they know that they need to, in the transportation budget, address those impacts from COVID. They also have a huge significant obligation because of court order to address state culverts, and they will have to start spending money on that this biennium. There is ongoing and active conversation about several different ideas about transportation revenue packages. We see Senator Hobbs continuing to talk about his Forward Washington package. He's put that forward for the last two years. He's going to unveil a new iteration of that here next week, actually, during Senate Committee Assembly. And it will be based on a partially based on a carbon tax proposal. I would just note that in both of his last packages, the Port Orchard roundabouts on Sedgwick have been included in that. But you also, for the first time, have Senator Saldana, who is also a Democrat, is the ranking majority member on that committee, working with stakeholders over the summer as well to talk to try and put together her own revenue package that is more, it's being called a progressive transportation package. And it's still unclear exactly whether or not that will include new a project list and new projects or whether it's just a funding mechanism that is based on more progressive revenue sources. I'm it's very, it's a little unclear still exactly what that means. It's definitely not a traditional way of of thinking about transportation funding. This year, change in dynamic. Now you don't just have Senator Hobbs, but you have Representative Fai, who's the Chair of the House Committee, who has been, he's done hundreds of listening sessions over the summer with different stakeholders and interest groups. He is going to put a transportation revenue package on the table as well this session, and those conversations, I think, will be very active. If it were not for the virtual session, I would think that it would be quite possible to get this done this session, but just given the dynamics, it's unclear whether they'll actually get this across the line, but expect a lot of conversations this session on that. The city AWC and WAC, the county organization, have adopted their legislative agendas. Most relevant for you is the AWC priorities. They really are focused in on maintaining the state share revenues. In the transportation world, they are wanting to putting focus on a local revenue option bill, providing additional local revenue, transportation revenue options for cities in particular, that will be part of the transportation discussion. There is a fiscal, local government fiscal flexibility bill that Representative Palet, who is the Chair of the Local Government Committee in the House, has been working on. It includes some items like allowing the use of real estate excise taxes, your REIT dollars for operation of your infrastructure facilities for a limited period of time, similar to the flexibility we got during the Great Recession for a limited period of time. It we see is focusing on the housing issue. There also have a statement about statewide police reform. And they all are also working on broadband and making sure that there is more access across the state. One issue that is on the sort of AWC's support list, but not a priority is tax increment financing for infrastructure. This is being put forward by Ports and Economic Development Association to provide an opportunity for a local government finance opportunity for infrastructure that would not require state funding. So essentially, you're using the increased property taxes from improving a piece of property to pay off a bond that would front load and the financing of the infrastructure. It almost every state in the country has this kind of authority. Washington's one of the only ones that doesn't. And there have been multiple attempts over time to get this, get this authority, wanting to try this again, particularly in this economic downturn as an economic stimulus type of tool. And then finally, on this, there's continued conversations around flexibility under the Open Public Meetings Act. Just like we've had under emergency order all through this emergency situation, wanting to make sure that the statute is written in a way that if this happens again, we don't have to go to emergency order in order for us to meet in this virtual format. So in terms of the city's legislative agenda, we do think it's a great year to be, it's it's the year to be putting forward the South Kitsap Community Center. We talked about this with legislators last year, let them know that this was coming and would be our request for this year. You know much more about this, frankly, than even we do. Just had a great presentation on this. We think that the right number is about $1 million for the 21 session, given the amount of money that they have in the capital budget. We've been doing a lot of work coordinating with the Port of Bremerton, who is requesting $2 million for breakwater replacement. And the reason this is important is because when it comes to local community projects like this, each legislative district will be given a bucket of money that they can distribute around the district. And if we are coming in, essentially, if there's a whole bunch of capital projects in the district, we'll just be at competition with each other. So where we we've really been trying to coordinate with the port so that we're not just essentially acing each other out of competition for these limited dollars. And having good cooperation there and really feel like there's a lot of, because of the location of both of the projects, a lot of synergy and ability to message the two of them together and have gotten very good reaction, particularly, well, let me rephrase that because it gives the wrong impression. We have had detailed conversation with Senator Randall, who has committed to sponsor this. I have only had a preliminary conversation with Representative Calder, but she is interested and excited about it. I have exchanged voicemails with Representative Young, but haven't talked with him directly about it yet, but I would expect good support from the entire delegation about this. And I will just take this opportunity to mention that after our conversation tonight, we do have time set up for the the mayor and us to meet with the entire delegation and go over this agenda, assuming whatever you approve tonight. And that's already on the calendar. The next priority, continuing on our our request for those two roundabouts on Sedgwick. $6 million for the two roundabouts. This is what we've been talking about for the last several years. It really is going to take another revenue package to get this funded, particularly with the budget deficit that they currently have. I do think this is the right strategy to just continue to ask for this funding. There's there's not a better pathway forward here. We also this year want to continue to highlight the city's participation in the Foster Pilot Program. Most of you know, this has been going on since 2018. The city has been a very strong participant in this task force. It authorized the completion of pilot projects for the mitigation of water withdrawals. Those pilot projects are proceeding forward. In fact, the city of Yelm just submitted their project, their results of their project to the Department of Ecology. It's the first one. And the task force is in the process of reviewing those results. And since the other pilot projects are still coming in, they're also going to be requesting an extension of that task force. The the main thing for us here is just to make sure that the legislature recognizes this, that this is an important issue for the city. Allowing, you know, pulling the plug on this at this point or interfering with the process would really be detrimental to the work that has already gone into the project on the city's behalf. We do have a statement on the document about police reform. I think it is important to be sensitive to the just the what the legislature is paying attention to, the fact that the city is not tone deaf on these issues. Our statement is consistent with other local governments where we're saying, you know, reforms are appropriate. However, if the legislature does provide additional mandates to local governments, it needs to come along with additional funding. So we're willing to make the reforms, but let's make sure that you're not passing on unfunded mandates. And again, that is very consistent across the local government world. Um, last page here on these, I know that that you all have raised and have a desire to continue to push on removing requirement that notices and and ordinances and resolutions are put in print, given notice to the public in print. You know, everything right now obviously is moving into the digital world and this has been a a controversial issue for years and years now. Local governments support this idea. Typically, the media does not support it. I I understand that, you know, it's important to keep this issue on the table. I think it's frankly, it's going to be very hard to make progress on this issue this session in the virtual format, but it is certainly one to have continue to have out there and and keep on legislators radar. We also similarly, in given all of the uncertainty in the transportation budget and the fact that the court throughout the $30 car tab initiative in is almost guaranteed to do something policy-wise with car tab funding, wanting to make sure that those appropriators are aware of how important those locally approved car tabs for your transportation benefit district are to your local transportation funding, that they don't, you know, in their enthusiasm to be responsive to the voters on car tabs, that they don't hinder your ability to use existing authority, which was upheld by the court. And then last and last, we've heard from you that there's an interest in supporting the Department of Natural Resources funding for their derelict vessel program. And certainly happy to do that. I know it's important, given that Port Orchard's right, right on the port, that these issues are impactful for you. So so want to make sure and highlight that. So our next steps, I mentioned, we have meetings set up with the delegation. We and the mayor will be briefing them on that and making sure that we line up sponsorships for these requests and making sure that we have a strategy developed with our legislative delegation. Capital budget request forms, probably you guys don't care too much about this, but it's kind of a big deal for Annika and me. They'll be submitted online this year rather than in a paper format, which will be easier. And then session will start on Monday, January 11th, unless we have a special session beforehand. And I will say, other than the presentation, I do have one other detailed question about a letter of support. And I know I've been talking and talking, but I think I'm just going to throw it out right now and answer and hopefully you can address it as I answer questions as well. We have been working with a collection of local governments to submit a letter to the governor's office, supporting funding for the Brian Abbott Fish Culvert Repair Fish Barrier Removal Board. The city has a culvert on that list. We're trying essentially to get all the jurisdictions that have culverts on the list for funding that to sign on to this letter saying essentially, please provide the money out of the capital budget so that our projects will get funded. I think it's, you know, there's no downside to it whatsoever. I think it's a good thing for you to lend your logo to, but the mayor just asked that we bring it up tonight and make sure that there's you you give us the thumbs up to go ahead and do that with the other local governments. And I'll finally just say, we really do enjoy working with you. It's a privilege to represent represent you. We like working with the mayor and look forward to our third third legislative session of success with the city. So happy to answer any questions and I'll stop sharing this now.
Well, and I know that if we get the $1 million for the community center and $6 million for Sedgwick, we won't be as concerned about the newspaper issue that Josh doesn't think he can tackle. So.
Even with that, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be valuable to sign on to the letter that you suggest.
All right. I'm not seeing anybody. I'm seeing heads nod and thumbs up. So. All right. Questions for Josh about his presentation or priorities. I I think you've seen, I've shared that those with all of you, I think over the last month or two, so none of them should be surprises to you. All right. Thank you for your presentation, Josh. I think we're going to move on to our agenda.
You guys are easy. Thank you. Nice to see everyone. Take care.
Okay, we've got our two presentations. Now we have a couple of public hearings and the first of which is a public hearing on our proposed 2021 20 and 22 night 2022 final biennial budget. Mr. Crocker, this is your public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In addition to public hearings on the preliminary budget and the revenue sources that we have held over the last month or so, the city is required to hold a public hearing on the proposed 2122 biennial budget honorable for the first Monday of December. The hearing allows council to hear public input on the proposed budget, consider those public comments and make any changes as indicated by the majority of the council. Staff noticed the public hearing in newspaper record, both in print and online and on the city's website. The notice encouraged citizens and community organizations to participate. The notice encouraged citizens and community organizations to participate by providing the council with their input for future infrastructure priorities, public safety enhancements, cultural and recreational opportunities, and other public services. Following citizen comment, the public hearing will be closed and the council may continue with its celebrations concerning the 2122 biennial budget. So staff would recommend that we open the hearing. And I do have a brief presentation on the status of the final budget. And then at the conclusion of the presentation, we can open up to public comment.
So that will open the public hearing. And please proceed with your presentation. I think Janine's going to allow you to share your screen.
Okay, so the first thing, hopefully we're all seeing your tax dollars at work document. Again, this has all been provided online and is available to the public to review at your leisure. We're going to start off tonight's public hearing presentation by reviewing the summary and the highlights of the proposed budget. As a reminder, again, for those that want the GL in its fullness for the 2122 budget is available through our finance department as well as online. This budget accomplishes many of the priorities and objectives set out by staff, directors, the mayor, council, and the public for our 2122 period. First, on the financial policy side, council sets some clear policy targets for our operating funds, for working capital as well as stabilization. The proposed budget by the end of 2022 achieves those policy targets. This budget does factor in the adjustments recommended from the salary survey results for the nonrepresented staff as well as funding the salary adjustments per contractual agreements for the represented staff. The budget invests in a new records management system for our police department as well, as well as making investments towards achieving accreditation and additional training for our police officers. This budget makes additional investments in developing an asset management program with a goal to acquire investment management software after our mid biennial review, looking at our storm, water, sewers, streets, and critical infrastructures. Now, looking at the transportation project or fund 002, we're investing nearly $4.8 million into transportation maintenance and operations. This includes approximately about $1 million dedicated to pavement preservation, crack sealing, and equipment to improve our local networks. Furthermore, the capital projects budget that we have developed includes sewer, water, transportation, and park improvements to a total of $13.665 million. So another large capital undertaking for our next biennial period. Again, as reminders to the public, there is a full detailed capital budget presentation available online as a part of documents provided tonight. Equipment rental revolving fund, we continue to invest in vehicle replacements. We've had an aging fleet in the last couple bienniums, this last biennium and this one. We've really made some progress towards replacing our fleet, making the additional investments in our vehicles. In this budget, we add a parks vehicle and we actually modify a public works truck in order for our staff to have a safe and more reliable crane truck for pulling sewer pumps as a part of our sewer operations. On the personnel front, there are five positions being filled here. We have four new positions. We have added a brand new billing official to the city, a community health navigator, which you'll hear a little bit more about later in the agenda tonight from both our HR coordinator as well as the police chief. We have added an information technology specialist to continue to help us innovate and use technology to move the full city forward. And we've developed a human resource manager and elevated those positions. We've also added a civil engineering one position to assist us in the permitting approval and review process. Again, we have significant growth occurring here in Port Orchard and our politics work staff is needing the assistance. At the mid-year review, we'll look at a number of topics as of course we'll look at revenue and expenses, see how we are performing. But these, this represents the list that we discussed of holding steady. The biggest one on this list is funding for our well 11 construction project as well as additional funding for transportation projects with Sydney Southwest Design. So with that, I want to jump to the other presentation. And give me one second, I am being, I have to let some folks into the meeting that left. Let me jump, oh, there we go. Okay. Mayor, can you confirm you're looking at the 2122 preliminary budget presentation? Great, thank you. Okay. Okay. So with this agenda tonight, again, this is a much longer presentation. And for the sake of our goals, I'm going to focus on slides two through eight. And let me move to the next slide here. Two through eight, capture our budget schedule as well as takes us through all the significant impacts that we have made to our preliminary budget after discussions with council, staff, directors, and the community. So on this slide, it's always important to remind the council of the many opportunities that we provided to the public to receive information about the budget as well as comment on it. We released the budget online and available to the public and council October 1st. The finance committee had their first opportunity to review and discuss the preliminary budget and make recommendations, at which point we brought the preliminary budget again back to the full council with a public hearing to discuss with the full council again, get greater direction. We then brought specifically the transportation budget to the transportation committee to review and provide us guidance for our 002 fund as well as our 304 fund, which represents our transportation operating fund as well as a transportation capital construction fund. We held our council meeting and public hearing on property tax on October 27th. And the following day, we had an all-day special council meeting again, available to the public to participate, really diving into each department's budget requests, goals of each department, and looking forward. After October 8th, we took all the recommendations and directions from the council and the mayor and accumulated this final adjusted budget, which is coming before you tonight as the proposed final budget. So this slide provides a comparison of the impact of the budget for all the adjustments we've made since the release of that preliminary budget. Working left to right, you see in the far column that we have clearly identified the adjustments that have been made. Overall, we see the adjusted beginning fund balance increased by about $15,000. Again, this, this summary slide here represents all funds of the city. Again, beginning from amounts has increased by about $15,000. We've adjusted our projected revenue by about $1 million with expenses being adjusted by $2 million with the overall net effect of all our funds being a reduction of ending fund balance by roughly $935,000. What you have in your ordinance tonight is a total expenditure appropriation increase of roughly $1,085,000 from our original preliminary budget, bringing the total appropriation to $99,754,800. So on these next two slides, we wanted to focus on the significant funds that were impacted by the council adjustments. And then we'll talk about that again, the net effect to those particular funds. So during our discussions, council advocated that we increase our sales tax projections by $300,000 over the biennium. And we use this money to transfer to the street fund for street preservation. We've increased our landscaping expenses in the fiscal year of 2022 by roughly $55,000. We've increased our commitment to marine patrol of derelict vessels. So it's important that Josh gets us some additional funding for that. But we've increased it by about $40,000. We are also going to increase our lobbying efforts and have a council retreat to the total of $10,000 adjustment. For the police department, we've increased the general current expense budget to account for evidence lockers to the tune of about $20,000. The next item was just a reappraisal of our commitment towards Ed Turner Park of $25,000. We did not get to that project in this current fiscal year, but we have every expectation to get to in early 2021 and the spring 21. So this is a reappraisal of those funds. Again, as, as part of the impact of the personnel, the HR manager, there's an adjustment of roughly $25,000 over the biennium as well as we eliminated the HR coordinator position. That we created the building official as a previously talked about. And we eliminated a building inspector and that had a roughly $54,000 impact on the current expense fund. We also eliminated the fire district building services contract. As now we will intend on having a building official who will be able to provide that work for us. And that actually saved the city roughly $113,000 over the biennium. We've updated our property facility insurance and that actually had an impact of roughly $123,000 over the biennium. Moving on to the street fund, again, we talked about the additional pavement preservation of $535,000, $300,000 of which is coming from additional sales tax revenue transferred from the 001 fund or current expense fund. And when we looked at our ending fund balance, council advocated for using some of the fund balance to contribute more towards pavement preservation. And so we have done that and reduced our funding fund balance by 235 and committed more towards pavement preservation during the biennium. Again, you'll see the HR coordinator position show up in several funds because it is, is a cost allocated position. These are very minor though, when at the overall fund impact. On the next slide, we look at our impact fee fund or fund 111. And here we've increased funding for our tip transportation improvement project 1.5A by $225,000 for the biennium. We've actually adjusted our priorities of our transportation improvement plan and have since decided to defund Sydney Southwest design by $500,000 and reallocate that money for the Bethel design and Sedgwick design. We actually intend to revisit the Sydney Southwest design as a part of our mid-year review. But at this point, we have defunded it and reallocated those dollars to the Bethel design per discussions with the transportation committee and staff recommendations. And lastly, we've increased our services contracts for the Foster Pilot Program by about $400,000. This is a very important program for the city as Josh just spoke to. And we want to make sure that we competed and saw that all the way through. So the summary of these impacts are again, these are the four funds that were significantly impacted by these adjustments. We have, the result is a reduction in ending fund balance of $142,000 to our current expense fund, a reduction of ending fund amounts to our street fund by 165,000. Impact fee fund, we reduce by 225,000. And again, those are restricted dollars for these projects. And then a reduction to our water operating fund by $402,000. This last slide here that I'm going to walk through again, just provides greater detail on these specific funds, what I'm calling our significant adjustments. In particular, you can see the beginning fund balance for current expense fund, the revenues we are using, expenses we estimate as well as the ending fund balance. And I want to reiterate that even with these adjustments advocated for by council and staff and the mayor, we are still meeting our policy target goals for working capital as well as our reserve and stabilization account. So overall, good adjustments to the budget. It aligns with the goals of the council, the mayor and the community as well as our final schools that the city has adopted. So I'm going to pause there as that is as far as I intended to go through this presentation. There's lots of material out there for you to look through and ask questions. So here's your opportunity.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing up to the public for any comments that they have regarding the presentation that Noah just gave.
If I could just make a comment, this is Ron Rice.
Certainly, go ahead.
I had to be readmitted to the meeting because for some reason, the whole thing dumped. It all of a sudden just started making a buzz. My screen went blank and I was gone. I'm not sure if that's your equipment or my equipment, but just advisory for you.
Okay, I hadn't heard that from anybody else, but thanks for bringing it up.
Okay.
Head Ron, do you have any other comment?
No, I'm, I'm listening and learning.
All right, wonderful. I see Alan raising his hand, please. Go ahead and provide your comment, Alan. Unmute yourself, though.
You may not want my comment at the moment. It was actually about the presentation of the community center. And if now is not the time to do that, I can hold it at the moment.
It would be, it would be later in the meeting. This is, this is regarding the, the budget process. But thank you for sticking around. Okay, others, anyone wishing to comment on the budget, budget presentation, the public hearing on the budget presentation? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. Somebody in the. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on the budget presentation. And we have a second public hearing also planned this evening. And this is an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters 2.20, establishing a planning commission, positions, terms, and terms ending dates and meeting requirements. And this is Mr. Bond. So Janine will need to, you need to, you have your screen shared, Nick?
I wasn't planning on sharing anything on this hearing, just talking.
Okay, so please proceed.
Yeah, so before the city council tonight is an ordinance to shrink the planning commission from eight members to seven members. And the reason for this change is that we have been having difficulty getting a quorum at some of our meetings over the last couple of years. And part of the reason for that is that with eight members on the planning commission, you need five of eight in order to achieve quorum. And if we were to reduce the size of the planning commission to seven, we would only need four members to achieve a quorum, which I think would result in a better ability to carry out the planning commission's mission and also would prevent unnecessary delays in taking action or considering certain actions where we've had some difficulty in recent years. So this is a public hearing on that ordinance. And the staff recommendation now is just to conduct the public hearing on the ordinance. And then this is a, a business item later on your agenda with an accompanying resolution that also has the effect of reappointing the planning commissioners and reassigning them to positions numbers one through seven and specifying new expiration dates for each member.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing related to establishing a planning commission positions, terms, and ending dates. So anyone wishing to testify on this matter before the city council. All right, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. So I'm going to close the public hearing on that. And we are going to proceed to our business items. And the first of which is adoption of an ordinance, authorizing positions of building official, community health navigator, human resources manager, and information technology support specialist. And this is Ms. Lund.
Good evening and thank you. As you just heard from Director Crocker, number of positions being proposed to you in your next business item in the 2021, 2022 budget. Four of those are new titles to the city of Port Orchard and therefore require you to create the position. So again, those positions are building official, community health navigator, information technology support specialist. In addition, the position of human resources manager. And that would result in the defunding of the current human resources coordinator position. And as Noah pointed out, the engineer one is a new position in the budget as well. But you've already approved that job position earlier this year, or excuse me, in 2018. And additionally, the way that this process now works for the city of Port Orchard is you, these positions are brought to you to approve via ordinance in concept, in the general sense of the position, the minimum qualifications for the position. And you have adopted an ordinance that allows the mayor then to finesse the final details of any job description once you've approved the position. So attached to the ordinance. So attached to the ordinance for your consideration tonight are some descriptions of the four positions being proposed for you to consider. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that. I do want to point out a couple of new developments since the packet went out. One is a correction on the human resources manager, the department would be administration. This position would report to the mayor. And secondly, on the community health navigator, we heard from the Teamsters Union today that represents the other police support personnel in that department. And they are claiming this position as being a union covered position. And the city's willing to accept that. We we have no reason to fight that. So it would be a Teamster represented position, a union position. Other than that, the ordinance and attachment is for your consideration. I'm happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Clausen?
Yes, just Debbie, if you could, what was the modification to the human resource manager position?
Currently, it's listed as HR as a standalone department. And instead, it is part of administration, which makes it report to the mayor. Clerk's office also is part of administration.
But that the creation of the position, you will accommodate that change?
Yes.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the creation of the four new positions, building official, community health navigator, human resource manager and information technology support specialist. And authorize a mayor to develop a job description consistent with the attached general qualifications and duties.
I had a motion by Councilmember Clausen, and I believe a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Are there any additional questions or comments related to this? Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Just a scripner on page 76, since I know these will be probably moved over down at the bottom from minimum qualifications for the HR manager should be in space human, just not in human experience.
Yes, yeah, I see that. We need a space there.
Thank you.
I don't know, her office is next to mine.
I wasn't going there.
Other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve these four positions. And all in favor, please state aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries and the ordinance is passed, authorizing the four new positions. We're up to item B, which the adoption of adoption of an ordinance adopting the 2021-2022 biennial budget. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor of Port Orchard has prepared and placed on file with the clerk's department a proposed budget and estimate of the amount of monies required to meet the public expense, bond retirement and interest risk reserves, funds and expenses of the government for the city for the bio period ending December 31st, 2022. As required, the city council held public hearings on the preliminary budget and on revenue sources for the coming year's budget, including consideration of possible increases in property tax revenue. The finance committee and council members have met independently to study the proposed budget and held budget interviews that required the presence of department heads. Input was sought from full council in these meetings, public hearings, seeking public input on the proposed budget were held on October 20th and November 24th. The 21-22 biennial budget does not exceed the lawful limit of taxation allowed by law to be levied on the property within the city of Port Orchard for the proposed purposes described in our 21-22 biennial budget. And the estimated expenditures each fund are all necessary to carry on the government of the city for the bio period 21-22. The 21-22 bio budget reflects department head requests, mayor priorities, citizen comments, finance committee and city council input and modifications. And with that, the council finance committee recommends approval for an ordinance adopting the 21-22 biennial budget for the city of Port Orchard for the year 21 and 22.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance adopting the 2021-2022 biennial budget in the 2021 salary schedule.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Ashby. If I may, I'd just like to commend all of you first, but Noah in particular. His pro the process that we've gone through has been very deliberate. It has been very detailed. The slides, I think, have been very clear for everyone on staff, council, public to understand. And hats off to you. I really appreciate the process. I know we've gone to this biennial budget and it's an extremely heavy lift every other year. And we added COVID and the cares and all the other things that were peddling so hard on at the city. And I know he and his staff have been pushed very hard over the last few months. And so thank you for what you've done. So.
I would echo that as well. And second, and thank you, Noah, and you, Mayor, for presenting us a budget that was well thought out and very easy to follow. Thank you.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I hate to be ditto, but I agree. You know, it's very laborious process, especially with a two-year budget. Again, Noah, all your department heads, and I'd also like to thank the finance committee for their work because without them, we wouldn't be able to bring it forward. So thank you, everyone.
Other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 biennial budget. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the budget is approved unanimously. All right, we are to item C, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code to establish planning commission terms, term end dates and meeting requirements. This is you, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, so as was presented under item 6B on the agenda, this is an ordinance to reduce the planning commission from eight to seven planning commissioners and to establish the terms associated with each planning commission position. I did fail to mention earlier in my presentation that it also changes the mandatory language that they meet once a month and says they meet, I believe, as needed, once a month or as needed throughout the year. So the recommendation from staff on this ordinance is to approve the ordinance as presented.
Councilmember Chang?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapter 2.20 to revise the planning commission positions, terms, term ending dates and meeting requirements.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Chang, and second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bond or myself? Councilmember Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question on the schedule. I'm on page three of five of the ordinance. Just curious why we have position three expiring in 21, position four expiring in 22. Is it should see what I'm saying, we got two expiring. I was just wondering why we're not expiring them two at a time or just is that just normal?
Well, I think I think we were looking at current appointments and when each of the position currently expires.
Okay.
So it's it's something that we could change if you wanted to, it would just cut one of the planning commissioners short by a year potentially.
Got it.
I can address that. So those two, and then when we get to the to the net, one of the next items, those two at 2020. It is, oh, anyways, two, two, two of the planning commissioners that are going to be reappointed. It's a net, yeah, and and are both, and I've already spoken to them and in December, I'm going to reappoint, they've already agreed that they're willing to continue to serve and be reappointed. And so then they'll serve for an additional term. So for for more.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't a mistake.
Yep, Councilmember Clausen?
Just a question, the appointment process was a little bit confusing, so it's going to remain the same as it's always been. You make the recommendation, the council approves.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Other questions on this? I know this has been a number of quorum issues over the last few years and you know, it's just it's made it challenging to conduct to conduct our business, so that hopefully this will take us in the right direction. Councilmember Chang, you have another question?
Comments, I commend Nick for for making an incremental change that could make a big difference. I can't believe that there were attendance problems with the planning commission. Having been a former planning commission member, I know that most of the members there really wanted to attend. And so it's a little startling to me that half of them are not attending for some reason. It also sounds like we're losing one, but is this one that just would have fallen off?
Okay, I had three to reappoint this year that were expiring and the the third one was Sue Ann Martin Smith from the homemade cafe. And we've talked and she's just, she did have attendance issues herself. And she's one of the ones that that we were challenged with, and she's just too busy with her restaurant that to to make a commitment to this. So she was, she's fine with not being reappointed.
Thank you.
So we didn't have to kick anybody off. That's that the answer. So. All right, so you have a motion and a second. And where you'll be voting on establishing terms and ending dates and meeting requirements for the planning commission. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. So item D is companion to this. It's adoption of a resolution documenting the membership of the planning commission by positions and term expiration dates. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, so this one, I think the title pretty much explains it. We are just putting the planning commissioner names to the newly numbered positions, one through seven. And we're doing that by resolution as is our standard practice for planning commission appointments.
And you can see on page 91, the the positions, the names and those expiration dates. And then those two that are dated 2021 will be coming back to you for reappointment here soon. Is there a motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution documenting the seven current members of the planning commission along with their position assignments and term expiration dates.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, and a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Are there any further questions on this matter? Okay, hearing none, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution documenting the membership of the city's planning commission by position and term expiration dates. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion also passes unanimously. See here, there's a lot of stuff on this page, so bear with me. Looks like we're to item E, adoption of a resolution adopting the 2021 legislative agenda. I had a presentation earlier this evening and Clerk Reinderson isn't here. Janine, are you reading this in the record or am I?
I have no preference. I can go ahead and read it if you'd like.
All right, I'll let you.
All right, so on October 27, 2020, Mayor Patonsu stated he emailed the 2021 legislative priorities to the council and said the lobbyists will be providing a presentation at a later date, which was heard earlier. So earlier this evening, the city's lobbyist provided a presentation on the 2021 legislative priorities, which included the South Kitsap Community Center, Sedgwick Road Roundabouts, Foster Pilot Program, police reform, newspaper notice requirements, protect locally approved transportation benefit district funding and derelict vessel funding. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution adopting the 2021 legislative agenda as presented.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving the 2021 legislative agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen and a second by Councilmember Ashby to approve the legislative agenda as presented. Any comments or questions on this? Okay. So all in favor of approving the legislative agenda as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the legislative agenda has been approved. All right, next is item F, which is adoption of a resolution approving a contract with At Work Commercial Enterprise LLC for the 2021 landscaping, Tremont Landscaping. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. The city does not have the internal capacity to perform all necessary landscaping services inside a professional landscaping contractor to assist. An invitation to bid was published in the Kitsap Sun, the daily journal of commerce in the city's webpage on October 30th and November 6th of 2020 for the 2021 Tremont Landscape Services Maintenance Services. By the November 13th, 2021 PM bid deadline, the city, Port Orchard, received three qualified bids for the project. All Pro at $30,921.12 At Work at $24,939.20 and Evergreen at $27,337.20. Upon review by public work staff, the city's public works department determined that At Work Commercial Enterprise LLC's bid of $24,939.20 with applicable tax included was the lowest responsible bidder for the 2021 Tremont Landscaping Maintenance Services contract. And additionally, the public works department has confirmed that the bidding requirements for purchased services was followed and that the project proposed is fully funded within the 2021-2022 budget just approved. Staff recommends the city council adopt resolution number 051-20, authorizing the mayor to execute contract C002-21 with At Work Commercial Enterprise LLC for the 2021 Tremont Landscape Services Maintenance Services in the amount of $24,939.20 and documenting the formal competitive bid procurement process.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt resolution number 051-20, authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C002-21 with our At Work Commercial Enterprise LLC for 2021 Tremont Landscaping Maintenance Services in the amount of $24,939.20.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli and a second by Councilmember Clausen for the Tremont Landscaping Services. I, you know, we built this beautiful roadway and we just simply don't have the public work staff. You know, we'd have to hire at least a person, if not two, to maintain this properly. So I think this is a, it would cost far more than this contract. And it allows our public works folks to, you know, focus on patching streets and repairing sidewalks and and working on sewer and water systems and and not pulling weeds and mowing grass. So I think this is a is a great way to get this work done. So Councilmember Deener?
I just was curious from Mark's perspective, how the third party maintenance has gone so far since the road was developed.
We haven't had any?
We haven't had any.
Oh, I thought we had, I thought we had somebody on board right away to know. Okay.
Well, we did. It was so, at the end of the project, a year ago, there's a 12-month plant survival period. So the original Green City subcontractor to ACI, they're responsible for everything for a year. And so we've just, we completed that at the end of August. And then we we then did a final cleanup and weeding. We replaced plants that had hadn't survived. We we put the irrigation system in the mothball for the winter. And now we're at this point of, and then public work staff has been kind of staying on top of it for the last couple of months. And so now we've got, if you look at the proposal, it's a kind of a two-season contract. So we'll start in on the the winter fall or fall-winter work. And then when we get into spring, then we'll get the irrigation system going and then things ramp up significantly. Public Works will continue to do the, what I call the fringe work. It'll be our job to keep the blackberries and the scotch broom and the the alders from migrating into the landscape maintenance area.
Good question, because yes, it has been being maintained, but but not via a contract. It was through the maintenance. It was through the maintenance aspect of the construction.
Oh, Mark, is this both the sides of the road and the center? The the center vegetation?
It's the complete corridor, yes.
Contractor is also working locally because I noticed they have a Bellevue mailing address.
Yeah, they're they're a this particular section of roadway because of the traffic control requirements isn't like mowing the grass down at at a Turner Park. This company, I understand, talking to Tony, does sound transits, right-of-way maintenance. They're 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 a large firm that specializes in this. So it it isn't, this just isn't your typical, you know, landscape contract.
We did. We did talk to during the the process, we had some interest by a local landscaper. But once they looked at the the requirements, it was too much for them to handle mainly with the traffic control requirements. It's a specialty to get out into that kind of traffic to do this type of work.
Other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the the contract for landscape maintenance for the Tremont Corridor. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Okay, the contract has been approved. See here, this is this is a continued item. And maybe again, I think we will be discussing this. We've talked about it a lot today. Prior meeting approval of a contract with South Kitsap Fire and Rescue to share funding for the community navigator position. So maybe I see Chief Brown is on here, but maybe Charlie, do you want to take this? Because I know Council, you and I and Councilmember Ashby have been talking about this a lot over the last few days. And I think you've got a red line version of the current versus what's in the packet. And maybe we could walk through that and those changes. I know the fire district hasn't seen it, so I'm not certain that we should vote on this tonight if this is the direction we want to take. So why don't you take this one, Charlie?
Absolutely. And I don't know, Janine, if you're able to allow me to share, I will share that draft. So we have been in conversation with Councilmember Ashby and others about edits to the document that would better serve the intent of the agreement and to clarify a number of the terms. And so I've made a few modifications to the document that better reflect that approach. Again, these edits have not yet been submitted to the district. So we don't yet have their sign off on it. So we bring this to you this evening for discussion and to see if there are any other edits that any of you may have when you take a look. I have redlined the edits, so they should be readily obvious. And I will walk through them as well. And again, we bring this to you this evening for discussion and for any council members who have any concerns with the draft with these modifications inserted so that at our next meeting on December eighth, when we bring this, what I believe this is eight, when we bring this back, everyone's concerns have been associated. We can move forward with it if that's council's pleasure. So.
One of the we'll walk through this, then provide it in an email to the council members so that they're, I mean, we'll 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 talk through this and walk through it, but I don't think that that one, there isn't probably a plan to take action tonight, I don't think. So go ahead, Charlie.
Correct. Yeah, thank you. So one of the global comments was related to confusion as to whether this was a contract that the established or recognizes that the city has created a position and then they're sharing that individual with another entity. You often see this with building officials. Cities will share their building official with another city or another agency. Here, we've created a community health navigator position. The city just did that by adopting your budget. And you will be sharing that community health navigator with the district. There was reference to this concept of a program in certain parts of the I L A. So I've removed those because this isn't necessarily a program, whereas this is simply the creation of a position. And then you're sharing that individual with another agency. I believe this was, this may have been an earlier edit, but just a typographical word edit. Most of these are all just in removing the term program. I'm clarifying that that the benchmark for performance is set out in the attachment A, which is the job description for that individual. So that individual would be serving the same job functions for the city as they would be for the district on a part-time basis. Clarifying that the individual would be fulfilling an amount of time and apologies, Councilmember Ashby, we talked about modifying this to be on an annual basis so that it's prorated, we're not prorated, but it's set out for a certain amount of hours on an annual basis. So the the version that I'm going to disseminate this week will have that modified so that we're not, the district is essentially getting fifty percent, which is the amount that they're paying into the program, rather than a set number of hours per week, which itself would be unmanageable. And then the other modification from what is in the packet is to insert language with regards to a set date for payment to be transferred, for the invoice to be issued and and payment then to be required. Language referencing that there would be a prorated reduction in costs when the program is suspended due to a vacancy, if that were to ever occur. Just some language changes here. And then insertion of language related to records. So when you have these types of relationships where you've shared an employee, often you run into issues where there's a public records request submitted to one of the two agencies. Whose records are they really related to that employee's work product? This clarifies that as our employees, the city's employee, all records are the records of the city and that the district would be giving the city notice if they were to receive a public records request related to the to the employee's work product. And I believe that's the only edit. The other document that I wanted to quickly share with you this evening and that I will disseminate is that attachment A that I referenced, and this is in still in draft form, but it is the job description that the city has put together thus far related to the duties of that position. You'll recall earlier this evening, by creating the position, you adopted language of a high-level direction as to the of the job duties and then you delegated to the mayor the ability to develop the job description, which this is the work product of the effort in part. Obviously, this is in draft. So again, I will I will disseminate both the modified contract and this job description. And then I will take those comments back to the district and attempt to get agreement as to the language in the contract and bring that back to our next council meeting. But I would absolutely entertain any questions or additional comments this evening, if anyone has any related to the drafts.
Questions? Councilmember Ashby, got your hand raised?
Well, yeah, I was, I really want to extend appreciation to Charlie for the work that she's done on this. She addressed most of my questions and I think removing the the reference to we were creating a program through this was very helpful for my understanding of it. It's more clear to me when we're just creating this position. One of my primary concerns she alluded to that she hasn't quite made the adjustment yet. But section two point five basically says that the city agrees that the districts has a need for at least twenty hours per week, that we were guaranteeing a minimum of this navigator for twenty hours a week to the to the district, which I was sure meant they were trying to get half, you know, half of a forty-hour work week, but it provided the city no protection. It didn't have a maximum number of hours. It had simply a minimum that we were going to allow them to work at twenty. So my suggestion was, could we change that language and say that the parties would, however, Charlie's going to word it, but basically it would work for the navigator would work for the district fifty percent of their hours that they their annual hours so that we don't have to worry about keeping track of it on a weekly or monthly basis.
And I think I believe Charlie referenced that that change that she had gotten to it yet. But once again, we've got to get the, I shouldn't shouldn't be a problem. We've got to get the fire district to buy off on these amendments.
Right. But I just wanted to make sure and I appreciate Charlie going through them because these were all points that I had brought forward. And I wanted to make sure the entire council had an opportunity to be aware of them.
Appreciate you bringing those forward and Charlie's attentiveness to you. Worked fast and furious this afternoon on this to get these so that we could have a document to review tonight. So. Other questions or comments? And and I don't expect you to have dissected the whole thing tonight, but I think that the changes were pretty straightforward and we'll we'll work towards getting consensus with the fire district and then potentially bring this back at our next meeting on the eighth that gives us two weeks to to hash that out with the fire district. Everybody comfortable with that timeline and and process? Okay, I'm seeing heads heads nodding. Okay, so we will not take action on this continued item. And it'll be continued. I do we need, the council need to take action to continue that? Or can we just do that Charlie shaking her head no? So.
No, yeah, we can just administratively punt it.
We'll administratively move that to the eighth. So I, so let's see here. And we're to H, approval of a contract with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for lobbying service services. And this is Clerk Reinerson. So that is Deputy Clerk Janine Floyd. Go ahead, Janine.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. For several years, the city has contracted with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs to provide lobbying services for the city. Notable successes have included monies appropriated for the Decolpier project and for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway. Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs also provides regular updates to the council and city staff regarding legislative issues. The current contract expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Gordon Thomas Honeywell, excuse me, is willing to continue to provide legislative support. The agreement is for a two-year term. The key terms are the same as the current contract, except the cost has increased in the second year by almost two percent. The amount for services in twenty twenty-one will remain the same as twenty twenty, but the services will go from forty-six thousand two hundred dollars for that year to forty-seven thousand one hundred dollars, not including travel expenses of up to twenty-five hundred dollars annually. Staff recommends approval of the contract as presented.
Mayor, I move to approve the contract and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for lobbying services with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs for the period of January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Kachardi and a second by Councilmember Lucarelli for the lobbying. And questions or comments related to this contract? Josh and from and Brianna previously have been with us for, boy, more than ten years. I know that and I'm done an exceptional job representing the city. And we've greatly benefited from the relationship that we have with them with with number of projects. So. All right, with that, you'll be voting on the approval of the contract with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs Services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. We're to item I, which is a contract with Kitsap County Prosecuting Attorney for prosecuting of criminal complaints and civil infractions. This is also the clerk's offices. Janine, how did, why did you let Brandy have the night off?
I think she deserved it this time. All right. Let's see. So for many years, the city has contracted with Kitsap County for legal services for prosecution of municipal criminal complaints and civil infractions. The current contract expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. The county is willing to continue to provide prosecution services. The amendment to the agreement is for a two-year term. The key terms are the same as the current contract, except this county's costs have increased. In twenty twenty, the city will have paid the county one hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-four cents for prosecution services. The new contract for twenty twenty-one proposes a base figure of one hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents to be paid in equal monthly installments. This is an increase from the previous draft shared earlier this year. It contained a lower cost under the belief that implementation of a tentative agreement reached last spring with the Prosecuting Attorneys Guild would be postponed due to the budgetary impacts of COVID nineteen. The Prosecuting Attorneys Guild challenged the delay in implementation of the wage increase and the Board of Commissioners has decided to formally accept the tentative agreement. The wage increase will be effective January twenty twenty-one. In addition, the original contract provided for increased compensation in such an event. See section V of KC dash zero zero three dash one nine, PO contract number zero zero nine dash nineteen. Staff recommends the approval of the contract as presented.
Councilmember Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a contract and authorize the mayor to sign a legal services agreement with Kitsap County for prosecution services.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Claussen, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe for the prosecution services. Any comments or questions? This is also another good relationship where we partner with the county up on, who is our neighbor up on the hill. And they've done an exceptional job for us in this capacity over a number of years. Any questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, be voting on the approval of a contract with Kitsap County Prosecuting Attorney's Office for prosecution of criminal complaints and civil infractions. All in favor, please say aye. Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. We're to item A, approval of contract, the city of Bremerton to confirm the service areas for the city of Bremerton and the city of Port Orchard Water Systems. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. The city of Bremerton is currently updating their water system plan, just as we are, and requires that the existing service area agreement between the city of Port Orchard and the city of Bremerton be updated to reflect a recent adoption date, basically establishing our retail water service areas. There are no changes in the new agreement from the existing agreement. And the retail water service areas for each city is contained in the Kitsap County Coordinated Water System Plan. Staff recommends authorizing the mayor to execute a service area agreement with the city of Bremerton confirming the existing service areas for the city of Port Orchard and the city of Bremerton Drinking Water Systems.
Councilor Deener? Mr. Deener, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, I was hitting my spacebar, which usually works. Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a service area agreement with the city of Bremerton confirming the existing service areas for the city of Port Orchard and the city of Bremerton Drinking Water Systems.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener and a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. For this matter, is there any questions of Mr. Dorsey? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the contract for the the service area agreements for the city of Port Orchard and the city of Bremerton, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion contract is approved. So we are almost to the end. We are to item K, approval of memorandums of understanding with the police guild representing patrol and with the police guild representing sergeants to execute previous MOUs related to work hours. Ms. Lund?
Hello again. I get to join you at the beginning and almost at the end. So back in May of this year, you heard for a request from Police Chief Matt Brown to approve contract language to change the uniform staff schedule from mixture of five, eight-hour shifts and four ten-hour shifts to a new schedule of ten-hour and forty-five-minute shifts on alternating five, four, five days on, four days off type of schedule. A lot of work went into the development of that schedule, both from the finance, particularly payroll side and of course, from the chief's side as well to make it all work and with the transition. That original MOU, which was mailed out today from Deputy Clerk Floyd. That original MOU, which was mailed out today from Deputy Clerk Floyd, hopefully you had a chance to see that. That MOU was approved back in May, and it was good through the end of this year. The schedule is working for both the chief and for the guild. Both guilds and their staff is requesting that that be continued. So for your consideration tonight is an additional MOU that came out from legal counsel Charlotte Archer today for your consideration and MOU to extend the previously adopted MOU for one more year, which would be for the duration of that union contract, which expires 12/31/21. So staff recommendation is approval of that extension via those MOUs, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll smoke a cherry.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Police Guild representing patrol officer and a memorandum of understanding with the Police Guild representing sergeants to extend the previous MOU related to hours of work to December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cuchardi, a second by Councilmember Diner to approve the the MOUs with the two guilds. Any questions of Ms. Lund in regards to this matter? Okay, you'd be voting on the approval of the memorandums of understanding with the two guilds representing our police department. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the MOUs have been approved. We have last order of business is the approval of the November 10th meeting minutes and we Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes of November 10th as presented.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Ashby, second by Councilmember Cuchardi to approve the November 10th meeting minutes. The corrections or discussion of those minutes? Councilmember Rose Pepe.
And paragraph 13 executive session should read announce no action will be taken.
Oops, I just lost one of my monitors. There we go. Did you catch that, Janine? I'm trying to scroll to it, but my monitor blocked out. Okay, you got it. Okay, so we'll correct that that error. All right, now all so you'd be voting on the approval of the minutes from November 10th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed and one abstention from Councilmember Diner. Okay. Would there be any objection before we go into our committee reports? Mister Futterman has been very patient to wait, wait through our entire lengthy business to allow his citizen comment. And then we go into our reports that he's probably not interested in. So Mister Futterman, thank you for being patient this evening and you've got three minutes to address the city council.
Okay, I'll try to take even less. Thank you so much. I'm not sure if anybody's here from Rice Fergus Miller. I'm actually the music director of the Bremerton West Sound Symphony. But the reason I'm here talking to you tonight is actually we discovered over the years that we have more both members of the orchestra and patrons from Port Orchard than we do from Bremerton these days. We're really playing concerts for the whole county, which is why we've become the Bremerton West Sound Symphony. What I wanted to say is one thing that's really lacking in Port Orchard is a public place to do concerts, whether they're musicals, orchestra concerts, any sort of things. And I wanted to encourage the city council and also folks from Rice Fergus Miller to consider possibly making a space that could be used as a performing arts center as well. And I sent a memo there of exactly what would be required, be a 40 by 50 stage area and seating for approximately 500 people. Now, that could be one big room that could also serve as the festival area that's been proposed. But I think this is something that maybe should be addressed and something that really I feel is lacking in Port Orchard. I just wanted to get that in. Sorry to take time at a meeting. I know it's not the priority tonight perhaps. But I think it's something to consider. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome, and thank you for being patient with us.
Sure.
All right, and I see one other member of the public since we've deviated. I see Gloria here is Gloria, are you wanting to address the council also or not? And hearing from Gloria, so we'll go back to our agenda and go to our council committee reports. And we'll start with our finance committee. They met last night and Councilmember Claussen, do you want to give a report?
Yes, essentially, we did meet and we had the presentation of our sales tax. Sales tax continues to come in, perform well. Year over year changes year to date, we're at about just a bit of over 6% in the plus category, which was obviously welcome information. We also talked a bit about the process of the 2020 budget and transfers that are occurring, as well as we then talked about kind of the difference between budget adjustments and and budget amendments. Budget adjustments is something that the finance director has within his authority and budget amendments or adjustments are are not adjustments, but amendments is the council's responsibility if we were to add funds, for example. I think we we talked a little bit. We have an ordinance that's going to be coming up before the city council that deals with some retirement benefits for those who are ineligible to join the state retirement system. It's an ordinance that was created a number of years ago, and we still have a need, but it needs to be adjusted some, so that'll be coming before too much longer to the full council for action. It's basically kind of cleaning up the personnel policies, and there's going to be more of those coming as well. We did talk briefly about whether or not, now that we've completed the salary survey for the nonrepresented folks, whether or not we should be looking at any salary adjustments to the council's salary. We talked about how that would have to take place in essence. At this point, if we were to make any changes, they wouldn't be implemented until new council members were elected into those positions. We did agree that we should go ahead and take a look at it. Mainly from the standpoint that a while back, we had a situation where council was not eligible to participate in the retirement system primarily because it was determined that we were making less than minimum wage. And that was the reason for the last adjustment that took place. But since that point, there has been changes in the state's minimum wage law. So we essentially asked the HR manager to do kind of a quick survey just to see if there's any justification for any changes as well as how it would relate to the person's retirement system. And let's see, there was one other issue in regards to the salary, it's escaping me right now. We did talk about some other things of recognition resolutions, which we concurred that we should go forward with. And then we had just a brief grant update from from the mayor, actually giving us kind of an update on what's been going on. We've been successful on some grant asks and not in others. He kind of gave us a recap of that, so that was pretty much it. We have agreed that we are not going to need to meet in December. And we have scheduled the next finance committee meeting will occur in January. I don't have the date in front of me, but I'll look it up and get it to you before the meeting is over.
I think we're going to meet in a on the third Tuesday of the month ahead of the work study is our plan going forward in 2021. For the finance.
And that happens to be the date that we had scheduled for in January, January 19th at 5:00 PM.
Yep. All right, thank you for your report, Councilmember Claussen. Economic Development and Tourism, have you met recently?
Our our next meeting is December 14th, 9:30 AM.
Perfect. And Utilities, have you met? Did you meet in the last couple of weeks?
Yes, we had met, we had met, and we actually had many discussions that had updates on tonight's agenda. But I, before I forget real quick, so John, you just said that your meeting was January 19th at 5 o'clock? For that for finance? Because that's supposed to be the utilities meeting, next meeting.
I don't think there's any overlap. Oops, there is, John.
So that needs to be looked at, I guess. That's I had down that our next meeting was January 19th.
Okay, the agenda here doesn't have a date yet, it says to be determined.
Okay. At our last meeting, we actually had, that was the set date for it is January 19th, so I'm just telling you that. And something that was discussed that was interesting and maybe not the best of news is the cost of the splash pad retrofit at five hundred twenty seven thousand dollars. So that to me was a little overwhelming, but that's supposed to come out of the park impact fees. We were working on the stormwater comp plan. Talking about that update and we also were talking about the sewer code amendments. And and that is something that that's going, the capital facility charge amendments, which will be brought forward at another time for the council. There's quite a bit there. And I think mainly what we're looking at right now is talking about the the foster pilot program and the expenses with that, but that is something we're moving forward with. So again, if if it's not changed, probably January 19th is is going to be our next meeting.
Right, we'll get together here soon and do rock, paper, scissors.
Okay.
Figure that one out.
All right.
Let's see here, land, I see sewer advisory committee, you have a report, have they met?
No, and that will probably be sometime in the first quarter. We haven't a date yet.
Okay. And land use.
We haven't met in a while, and our next meeting is December 9th at 4:30 PM.
Okay. And transportation met this evening.
We did, we met at 5 o'clock today. And I'll just review our agenda bit. We have received some safe transportation city safety grants. One of them is for the roundabout at Bethel and Lincoln. There in the timing on that is a 2021 design and a 2022 construction. And so we're what we're doing now is working on the funding match and the timing to make sure that we can bring all of that together. And before any council will need to approve the grant before the federal grant is is fully actualized or executed. The other grant we received was a forty thousand dollar grant for a street lighting study. So we will be able to get a grant to look at our street lighting, see if there's any safety features that we can add that will improve the lighting on on the streets. So those were the good noises. And the Lincoln Bethel Roundabout has some real possibilities or it's fortuitous because of some other projects that we anticipate happening back on Harold Street and in the vicinity of of that intersection. So hopefully we'll be able to put all that together. We did have a couple of applications in for the Transportation Improvement Board, and we were not successful with those particular applications. One was for the roundabout at Anderson Hill and O'Clifton. The other one, I believe, was for design work of a salmon berry roundabout. We weren't successful on those two, so the good news is we can try again next year. So that was the two that we didn't get. We also talked about and the Chris has been working on a sidewalk repair and retrofit plan. They're working, the department is working on updating our ADA transition plan. And he intends to come out of it with a prioritized list of work we need to do on sidewalks and ADA accessibility. He did give us some basic background of sidewalks he had identified that were associated with schools or parks. And I'm not remembering all of them, but our sidewalks, as he said, we have our sidewalks are in greater disrepair or in need of preservation and maintenance in some of our city streets. Then we had Nick's infamous growth, projected growth presentation, and he gave us a staggering number of 1,511 living units coming on board within potentially being permitted within the next couple of years. So that's exciting. That gave everyone a deep breath and a bit of a pause. Which then led us to the question about traffic impact fees and when can we increase them? Or when are we going to look at that adjustment? And Nick believes that TSI will be able to get that data to us and bring it forward. I think you said January or February, the first part of the year. So basically, that was our meeting, and we will be meeting again not until January. And we do meet the fourth Tuesday of the month at 5 o'clock.
Thank you for your report. I've got to find my agenda back here. Lodging tax.
We'll meet in February.
You'll meet in February. And Christmas is coming, whether COVID is here or not. So what are you doing, Cindy?
So I'm sure most of you have noticed Bay Street and how beautiful it's looking, except for a handful of trees. Most of the trees are decorated and all are sponsored. And people are still working on that. We have a little bit of a glitch down on the corner by Josephine's with some electrical issues, it seems. Having to get that worked out, we're working out some few little complications with music. Not an easy thing to play chime music anymore. That has changed from the past. And our event is called the Festival of Chimes and Lights, so we're trying to get some chimes to play.
Tomorrow, Cindy, maybe before nine or after 11?
Okay, yes.
Which is better?
Before nine.
Before nine, okay. Call me or I'll call you.
Okay, sounds good. All right. All right, work out those details. So that's pretty much a scoop on that. On the weekend of the 5th, which is the actual Chimes and Lights date, we will be announcing the winners of the tree decorating contest, and a lot of people are anxious to hear the results of that. That's pretty much our event this year, you guys. But hey, everything's beautiful, the port is decorated and the city, my goodness, Public Works has been working very hard. Has everyone seen the tree downtown by chance? Isn't it lovely? Yeah, so the the city, the city will be very festive. Thank you.
All right, that's all your hard work on this, Cindy. Outside agencies, Beck, you have anything for KRCC, the legislative?
No, we had a a great legislative program. It was the 12th of November. Got a lot of good information from our legislators right now. I'm not remembering exactly what it was, except I do remember Senator Rolfes, because I'm interested in transportation. She said her transportation priorities were the Washington State Fairies first.
were the Washington State ferries first and then Highway 305 and then Highway 104, but it was encouraging to know that she, even with the budget shortfalls for this state and the ferry system, we're going to have an advocate in Olympia working very hard for those. We had, as far as KRCC is concerned, we're working, Nick and Mark are involved with that, updating the countywide planning policies. And that involves a lot of land use issues and transportation issues and the technical folks are doing their side of it and then it will come to the policy folks, but we have to have all this work done by June because we have a six month ratification process for those, for the CPPs. So basically that's what KRCC is doing right now is really focusing on updating the CPPs. And transportation wise, we're gearing up for the project selection criteria for the next federal funding cycle. So that's what we're focusing on and that's about all I have right now, Rob.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything from the other agencies. Our Super Tuesday is next week, so I'll have something to share on the 8th. I only have one item. I know Councilmember Kuchardi, after two and a half hours, wants a lengthy mayor's report, but I don't have one. So my only question for you is, Janine's been doing some research on Facebook boosts and it's, we would pay money for them to push things to people that aren't in, that aren't signed up to be. And I'm not a Facebook person, so I, you know, maybe you guys know more about this. Are, is there, for roughly 10, for $10, we can reach 100 to 300 people and for $20, we can reach 200 to 600 people. Now why that those aren't exact numbers? I don't, I don't know. And is there, you know, we're, I'm constantly hearing, you know, we need to find creative ideas and ways to, you know, push our council meetings or projects we've got going to reach people, but I, I don't know about this. And so that's why I'm, and you don't have to give me an answer now or maybe get back to me, but what, I saw Cindy scowl and I, so I'm taking that's no and Beck's grimacing, so and Fred's raising his hand. So I'll let Fred. What do you think about this Fred?
I think it's an intriguing idea. It's not a lot of money, but I think the question is what does that reach actually get us? How do we know that the people it's reaching are people we don't normally reach? And more importantly, is there any way that we can capture them and maybe add them to an email list, that sort of thing? Because otherwise it's kind of nebulous, like, okay, maybe reach 100 people didn't normally, who are they? You know, it's, it's.
It would be nebulous Fred and I don't believe Facebook is going to share that data, but reverse back to us for us. Because they want to sell us an additional push, so. Yep, Councilmember Kuchardi?
Rob, I was just going to say, there are reasons why those, those things can be effective. I would just talk to Ryan. He probably knows all of the ins and outs and there may be, you know, issues that this makes sense to others. They wouldn't make sense and I'm sure he could provide you the, the guidance for that.
Yeah, he was, he was, this is where the idea came from.
And it can be effective, it really can. And it can be very cost effective, but just depending, you know, if you feel like you've got some sort of a communication strategy, we're not getting response. It can prove to be quite successful, but.
But does that require you to have sort of a focused group to begin with?
No.
No, I don't think so. It's, it's, it's a bit nebulous.
Just a boost.
Okay, I don't know enough.
It goes much deeper than that too. It goes far beyond that. So instead of getting into a debate tonight, I think Ryan could make recommendations on when and how and how best to maybe increase awareness.
You can probably explain it better too, because I, it could be that our normal area is everyone who's liked the city's Facebook page. Let's say there's 500. And the boost could be to people who haven't liked the city's Facebook page, but Brian can probably explain it better.
Why, why don't I have him come to a future council meeting then and talk about this and why, how we could use it? Really what I'm, I'm thinking is maybe he subcontracts, you know, the serotonin folks have just knocked it out of the park with this community center and if we've got some, you know, I know we didn't get the, you know, whether it's our parks plan or some things, where we got very little participation. You know, if we, we hired a local consultant, whether it's through that contract or through Ryan's contract, I think I they, they really know, know our community and how to reach people in our community. Now I've been so impressed with Rice Fergus and their subcontractors, so.
One thing they mentioned was that they use the library's email distribution list and I think that gave a really big boost to people who are committed. Maybe the city could do something similar for certain events.
Yep, Councilmember Ashby?
Well, I was going to say, I think this conversation started when we were talking about the downtown subarea plan and how to get comments back on that. Is that kind of what prompted it, Nick?
No, this is something I've.
That you came up with, okay.
But that's another good example. I mean, we're doing, you know, we're shaking the trees and the bushes and people aren't, you know, aren't talking to us and, and how do we, how do we get, get to people? And that's, so I'll, I'll reach out to Ryan and Councilmember Clausen, you have a thought?
Yeah, I was just going to also offer that Kitsap County has a very good database of citizens through a variety of their community councils and the like and, you know, I know we use that frequently at Transit. We've used the Facebook stuff at Transit before. I can't tell you how effective it was, but but there are a number of databases out there, email addresses that could be available to us.
Okay, all right. I just, I just recognizing we need to do more and we're trying to and we need to reach more people, so and we're trying. So the only other thing is Nick, are you in town November 2nd? And I'm sorry to hijack this meeting, but we don't see. November 2nd or December 2nd? November 2nd. Yes. You, okay, so I've got a Kiwanis presentation I'm supposed to do and your development data could be really informative. So if, maybe if you want to join me that day. Let's talk tomorrow. Okay, all right, thank you. Wasn't saying no. So let's see here.
That's not going to be part of your department's report.
That's a brilliant response.
Tomorrow. All right, department heads, clerk's office.
I don't have too much, but just as a, I guess a heads up. So I went on our Facebook page to see if I could find any more information about boosting. And there is a location for under audience that you can choose people who like your page and their friends. So it looks like you can tailor the boost as to who it gets sent to. So it looks like when we do a regular post, it'll go to our, I say our normal people plus the additional 2 to 600 if we do that, the charge for the boost. So I just kind of wanted to let you guys know that. Other than that, I don't think the clerk's office has any reports unless you guys have any questions for me.
It's getting late. That's what I know. Charlie?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Mr. Dorsey left us. Mr. Bond goes last, so Mr. Cracker?
I got nothing.
You got nothing?
I would do want to thank the council for working with us for the last, what, six months on the budget. It is a long process. We've been doing this since April, May, June, July. It's amazing and I actually feel like we really built a wonderful budget. It's, it's pretty, it's one of the best budgets I've built, so I'm pretty proud of this one. So thank you all.
You.
Our new HR manager, Debbie Lund.
The only thing I have is to wish all of you a very safe and happy Thanksgiving weekend.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Brown?
Debbie stole my thunder, but no, I wanted to thank Charlie and thank the council for the patience with the Navigator program. This is a, this is a big deal for us. So we do want to get it right first time and also thank you for the support with budget.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Bond? What do you, what do you have, anything else to share? You got all kinds of development data you shared.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report. All right. And we are to, I'll ask one last time for citizen comments. I see Gloria here has hung with us for more than two and a half hours. So if you'd like to address the council, this is your opportunity.
No, I didn't have anything I needed to share. I just was observing the process. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for joining with, joining us tonight. All right. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving everybody.